If there's no objections, I believe we have quorum or do we? If you're, yes, we have quorum. Who is could seven, three, zero, one, ten?
That's, that's me, Maureen.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Lindsay was here. She's still.
I see her picture, so I assume she's here.
I'm here.
Okay, um, then let's get started.
I don't think you have enough.
We have.
Yeah, three.
Right? Oh, okay. Fiore is here, right?
Yep, I'm here. Make a motion, we accept the previous minutes. Unless there's any additions, corrections, and or deletions.
Right here, motion second.
Was there already a motion?
Yes, Fiore made a move.
Sorry.
Okay, all of favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, I don't, I'm trying to. Trying to pull up the agenda as we speak. Nope, it's not either. Somebody has agenda, please state what it is. I apologize. I don't have.
Thursday, I sent it out Thursday.
Got it.
I have it.
Last minutes, I don't need minutes. Agenda, go. No, got it.
The interim interim report would be next.
Uh, actually, uh, discussion of REPO, REO policies, does that sound accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's, let's get into it. Um, anybody want to get started?
Um, sure. So councillor, last meeting, you had asked me to bring back a couple of things. Um, I have them written down over here, so.
Okay.
That's why I'm facing this way.
Sure, no problem. Not offended.
Um, list of projects, a law presence and the mayor's appointees. So I have updates on, on those. So I, I did bring up the subject of the mayor's appointees. Um, to the powers that be, I'm waiting to hear back. I haven't heard anything. The second thing is law presence. Um, the law department has not got, gotten back to me with someone they can assign to the REO. Um, Lauren Stabalo did get back to me. She doesn't, her office currently doesn't have the capacity to send anyone. Um, I know that Theo had been here before, but really he had been here in a law capacity, not a procurement capacity. Um, so I will follow up with law to see if there's anyone that they'll be able to send for us. Um, and the third is projects. So we have to, under our scope, um, we have to bury, obviously, you know, we've been being updated about that. Um, we have two other projects, the forestry operations building that's being built over in Forest Park. Um, that's over a million dollars. And then we also have, uh, the site tech boiler project. Um, no, wait, site tech doors and windows, which is, uh, a little over six million dollars. So those two projects will also be under our purview.
It's boiler and doors and windows?
No, just, just doors and windows. I'm sorry.
Okay. And does anybody else have any questions?
Have the, so it does it sound, it sounded like the forestry project operations building is started. Are they in the foundation or digging it or something? And is the site tech window job started at this time?
I, I'll take this one, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Um, the forestry building has not started. Um, they're going to be doing site work in the next couple of weeks and they will start, uh, in the spring. Um, uh, site tech, uh, doors and windows will start at the end of June and complete at the end of August. Um, there's two hundred and five windows being done and six doors.
Contractors for those projects?
Um, contractors, so for the foresting building, it's, excuse me?
To, to general contractor.
Yep, the G C is M A R O I S. They've done a couple of other projects for us. Um, uh, Maroys, Maroys Construction.
Maroys Construction.
Maroys, there you go. Uh, thank you, Maureen. Maroys Construction, uh, will be the forestry building. And, um, Chandler, uh, will be the site tech doors and windows. And Chandler actually did a good job on the Brightwood Lincoln project. So we have, uh, faith in them. We've met with them. Uh, yesterday, uh, we'll have a pre-con with them in a couple of months and the same thing with, uh, Maroys, Maroys, yes.
Okay. Um, sounds like you guys got a handle on it and it's progressing properly. Um, any other questions, comments? Tim, I was just joined us, I believe.
Well, I've been on the, I've been on the whole time.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Um, the, um, I had a question on the mayor's appointee. I don't have a, if you want to stay with that, those two projects, stay with that. And then I have a different question.
Sure, no, go ahead. We just, we just get it all done. So just a matter of.
All right. Um, well, I appreciate that Che just gave us an update on the projects. That's good. Yeah, I was wondering what the mayor's appointee, um, is, is that about one of the five of us? Is that about Pat Sullivan or what is it?
Well, yeah, well, Pat is the, uh, Pat Lindsay, I believe, uh.
I think Fiore too, right?
I am too, yes.
Yes. So as a matter of fact, the only, the only council appointees are me and you. Uh, everybody is appointed by the mayor. Uh, Pat, yeah, Pat hasn't been here in over a year now, or about a year. Um, and before Pat, uh, there was, as you may remember, there's been, there was a couple of different gentlemen who were appointees by the mayor who have been appointed, I think one came to two or three meetings a few years ago, uh, he dropped off. And before that, it was another gentleman or a person that was on the committee who also, uh, tended pretty more regularly, but not, not consistently. And then he dropped off. So we, yeah, so we were, we were down one before, uh, if you exclude Pat, we've always been down one appointee. And now with Pat, whether, you know, for whatever reason, um, um, without Pat, we're actually literally down two appointees. Um, I guess this, did he?
Are we supposed to have six people or five? We have five with that.
I believe we're supposed to have seven.
No, you always have, is it? No, five. It's always, I mean, ours is five, to my knowledge, Melvin. And the reason you always want an odd number is so there's no, is always, there's no tie. You always have a tiebreaker.
Yeah, I actually, the thing is, is, I can't remember exactly. We've been doing it, uh, this is one on for 12 years. So, um, uh, the only original people that are still here that's been here for the entire 12 years is me and Fiore. Uh, Tim, you can't get after, uh, we had Bud on for a while when he was on the council. Um, but everybody else here is new. Some actually didn't even go to the city back then. Um, or weren't involved with, I mean, the carpenters union has been a partner in this project since the very inception. And I believe they were a part of the architects to help create the REO. Um, but Fiore and I, we, we've been the stalwart that have been here all along. Uh, I guess it doesn't, if it's the will of the council in terms of, first of all, as far as the administration's appointees, um, it's, it's their discretion. I remember having, the last time I had a personal conversation with anybody was when Denise Jordan, a few couple of years or a few years ago, and when she was still chief of staff about it, but, um, do we need an appointee or not? Uh, I'm not going to make an issue of it where I guess we're functioning. And the scope of the work that we're doing isn't overburden some, I don't think. It's just, you know, one must a meeting. Um, but I'd like to hear what the committee members feel about it. As far as the appointee at the law department lawyer, different conversation, but, um, Lindsay or Fiore, Tim.
Yeah, well, my, my thought is, I mean, Melvin, you and I have been appointed again to it. So we're on for the year. Um, I personally, I mean, I haven't talked to anybody about this, but I personally think the only issue we have is, is that Pat hasn't been coming. I, I think Lindsay is a strong member and, and Fiore is a strong member and they can, they're consistent, they come. And that's the, one of the main things here is just consistency and, and interest in the issue. And I think, I think, you know, it just Pat hasn't been coming. So if that's what this is about, I think it's worth talking to Pat and see what his, I, you know, would talk to him first before talking to the mayor, but that's up to you. But those are my thoughts.
The only thing that really makes a difference is, is honestly getting quorum. And I think ninety-nine out of a hundred times, we've always been able to get a quorum. And I'll be honest with you, I don't think we've ever had to worry about this vote where we need to override somebody, you know, I mean, a deciding factor on a vote. So four or five at this point ain't killing us. Four makes it easier. Five would make it, we're always going to have a meeting. Let's just put it that way. I'd be shocked that three out of five can't come to a meeting. That's, the more you have, the easier it is to get that quorum. That's all. But whatever it is, it is at this point.
Okay, um, I, I don't have to, I'm, I'm not that concerned. I've been, um, you know, my schedules, aside from docs' appointments, uh, my schedule is pretty flexible. I try to keep the sec, you know, the, the, once I know the meeting, I put it in my calendar and I try to keep it. And then most docs' appointments, well, everybody's having the same problem where I have, I'm having, which is if you ain't got COVID, they don't want to see you. Uh, and if you do got COVID, they probably don't want to see you. So, um.
And Maureen does do a great job of keeping us in line and making sure we're coming to the meetings and making sure that we're going to have a quorum, um, versus wasting our time and showing up and no quorum. And, you know, people wasted their time by showing up. So, um, I think that that's great. We don't always get that sometimes in these committees, but thank you, that works well.
And, and actually, I appreciate everything Maureen's done and some, and I think the last meeting, we talked about making sure we responded back to her, her request for attendance and agenda items and stuff. And of course, it still makes it easier to attend these meetings as well. It's not like we're showing up at city hall and I'm walking off to the third floor and nobody's there. So I've done it and, uh, or sometimes I just get the days wrong. I show up down there. Um, okay, I'm not going to push the issue if, if, uh, and, uh, I think Lindsay had shared it with the administration. It's in there, uh, the ball's in their hand part now or whatever. Um, and it's at their discretion where they choose to appoint somebody or not. I'm not going to push that. The law department, that's an issue or the lack of lawyers is across the board. Uh, the law department is in flux. Um, they, they're doing, you know, they're doing the best that they can with the resources they have, but with the old leaving, uh, attorney Davis left, and I'm sure there's probably some other changes and, and of course, it's in transition. So, you know, you, you only work with what you got. And if they're not available, they're not available. But I appreciate everything they're doing for us. Uh, it's just, you know, and if we, you know, we have to police ourselves and just be careful what we say, how we say, what we say to who we say. Uh, and make sure that, you know, we will live in a world of litigation. Um, some of my colleagues on the council, city council, uh, don't seem to realize everything they say is probably coming back to bite them and, uh, invite the city when the lawsuits start flowing because we go beyond the scope of our charge when we have conversations and public meetings. Um, so that's my two cents on that. Um, and as far as, um, projects, I know this, there's a, with all the money that's coming into the city and, um, listening to the tone of some of my colleagues, especially around some of the work that's being done. Um, if anybody was watching meetings last night, you saw that we've got a couple of big privately invested projects that will have public money. I think there's probably an appetite for the, you know, that at some point, maybe not through us, but you guys can anticipate that they might be want, uh, interest in, uh, is, it, it, it always seems like they come back to, you know, how, how does the council have more influence on how the money is spent? And directing it to where they think it should be in relation to the community and who represent it's the community. Um, and I'm not really ready to go down that road in its entirety, but it is what it is. Um, so anybody else got a thing next that they need to run in before we jump into?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yeah, I just have one comment. I believe John Payne, the new city solicitor is starting, or started yesterday or today or something, just at the beginning of, of his, of his term. So, um, I don't know who's making the, is it, is it you, Lindsay, trying to get somebody from the law department or whatever? But it's a good time probably to put that request in. See if we get somebody.
So I have put the request in. Um, and I'm waiting to hear back. Um, I had already heard back from Lauren. She doesn't have the capacity with her staff right now.
Yeah.
Um, I'll follow up the law department.
Okay, great.
And I will report back next meeting.
Okay, hi, hi. I didn't know. The last I had heard was Ed was still going to hang around until June. Um, which made sense to me. I mean, when I retired from the state, um, my wife until June twenty-ninth, I retired June thirtieth, well, nine. Um, we got that extra by doing it that time. We get the, uh, once you become a retiree, you, you qualify for raises yearly as opposed to union contractors, uh, where you have to negotiate all your raises. So it makes sense to stay until June, but that's his business. Um, but thank you for sharing with that, Tim, because I didn't know who was where and what, you know, obviously Ed was at our meeting last night. Um, it does, if, if they, is there any other questions around the policies or how we do what we do that we need to get into? Okay, then the next thing we have on is, uh, the reports on how D Berry and Homer, uh, is working. So our guests, please, uh, welcome. And the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much. Um, yeah, and I, I do have to apologize. I, I will have to run out. We have, I'm actually in the Lister office today. We have um, a presentation for our local high school at three. So I'm not going to be on for, uh, for too long, but I'm glad I get to the opportunity to share what the December numbers were. Um, so we'll just start with the numbers and then just, you know, talk about some of the activities that we, um, certainly were doing in December and have been doing, um, in the new year. So for, uh, for the data, for folks of color, we have twenty-six percent women, we're at eight percent. Veterans, eight percent. And for residents, we're at twenty-nine percent. Um, so, um, we, you know, have been staying above, we, we're above goal for, you know, three of the four for this, uh, Springfield residents being, uh, the ones that we, you know, def, dipped down, uh, below what the goal was. But, um, we are very confident with the, um, subs that are slated to be, you know, coming on board, that we will make up that ground, um, pretty well. And actually, you know, make some ground across all four categories, which is great. So related to that, we, um, two or three weeks ago, uh, we had a really good conversation with H Car. Uh, we're trying to, um, get in touch with Wolverine Fire Protection, um, as well as just, you know, checking in with some of the other subs who we know will be mobilizing, um, more fully, uh, later in the winter and early spring. So that's, you know, we're really trying to stay ahead of, you know, the conversations with folks, um, as much as possible. I know, you know, Frank, uh, Dave, Jim, they're talking with, um, the folks very early on in the process. And then we have, uh, standing time where Che and I, uh, will, you know, it's always Fridays at eleven that we always leave open to have some of these kickoff conversations. So, um, that's where we are on the numbers. Um, and in the meantime, we've also had a couple of folks, uh, walk on to the site and fill out applications, uh, which has been really good. One of, um, we had an apprentice carpenter, uh, who was, is a woman who actually Chandler brought on so that, you know, uh, indeed a, a success. Um, and we have had a couple of other folks, uh, refer to us. So just on the, you know, workforce development side, you know, that there's, you know, a couple of other, you know, actions that are happening in place to make sure that we're bringing in, um, helping to bring in the workforce to, um, you know, to this project. We've also had, um, a couple of students from Putnam, uh, come on, come onsite and do a tour. Um, and that's a partnership that we are hoping to continue, um, and expand more upon. And Charlie and I were actually, uh, on a call with, um, some folks from the carp, carpentry department. Um, you know, trying to talk through what we can be doing with, um, some of the young folks who, you know, are within the department to just, you know, encourage them to, you know, keep, you know, keep at it. So hopefully they become our future workforce. So that's a brief overview. Frank, if I missed anything, Charlie, Che, please jump right in.
Oh, just, just as Liz mentioned, early on, when we bring the different subcontractors on board, we try to get ahead of it. We meet with them. We make sure they're understanding the REO requirements. We get them to sign a form. It says that they do. So it's not only in your contract. We have, we have it in multiple documents that we beat it over their head that this is, this is a goal, these are requirements. So between Liz, myself and a couple of other folks behind the scenes, we, we pay a lot of attention to it.
Anybody have questions or comments? Che or Lindsay?
Hold on. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Fiore, please.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, um, ask one quick question. So under J L Marshall, Marshall, so I actually even have a sub under him, which is, are we listing subs? In other words, is that particular, is there a reason the sub isn't showing or should he be showing? I, I guess is the question.
So you mean if someone subs out part of the, their scope of work, should they be showing?
Jail, jail marshal has the, uh, rebar installing contractor by the name of, hold on, I read it, wrote it down somewhere. Um, oh man, I don't know where I put it.
Um, I see J L Marshall on.
So, yeah, J L Marshall's on there, but the Miller rebar is the name of the guy. So should, I'm only asking, should Miller, do we need to, are you classifying subs separately under that other sub? I guess is the question.
Um, not, not that I've seen certainly, um, you know, it's, you know, if it's something that I need, I mean, I can certainly go back and, you know, see if we can, you know, track some of this information. Uh, but right now we have only been listing the, the primary. Um, in some cases we do know. So if someone's bringing on an MBE or WBE sub, uh, you know, we do have that information. Um, so I can just, I mean, if it's okay with the group, I can take that, uh, as a follow-up.
Well, the, the reason I bring it up is this, because traditionally what we have seen over, uh, over the years is that a sub of a sub of a sub, they always, you know, again, it, it's the ultimate subs responsibility to enlighten their subs of the REO. Um, the problem is that we, we have seen that traditionally, a lot of these sub subs have failed or the accountability just wasn't there because they, you know, again, so if they're not being seen and their numbers aren't being shown, when we're looking at a report, what do we have the base that by, we're only looking at the main contractor. And if he's doing good, that's fine. But the problem is, what are his subs doing? And so again, we, we, um, you know, I'm just generalizing. Do we want to really go down to the sub of the subs? Because I think traditionally, uh, you might be able to back that up, Melvin. We've saw subs of subs. The numbers have always looked, I don't want to say always, but traditionally or more so have looked bad throughout the years. So again, it's just another layer of accountability with the subs because they are hiring and will continue to hire these slubs, subs as we move going forward. That's all.
Right. Okay. No, thank you. Um, thank you for, um, pointing that out. I will, um, in between now and the next meeting, um, I'll see what, uh, we can track down.
One other point was just to, I don't know if you and I had this conversation when we, when I personally, I've never looked at a number less than five hundred hours because what I tried to look at was five hundred hours was one guy for three months, two guys for one and a half months and three guys for roughly one month. So to me, when you've got three guys there for a month, um, and you still see zeros, then the five hundred hour mark to me was about the, where they should be doing something out of five hundred. So that's just to keep in the back of your mind. I don't know if other people feel that way, but again, for me, I've always gone with like five hundred hours, anything less than that. You know, it's just, it's a small crew, small job. Uh, but when you look at certain contractors and they've been there for five, you know, again, three guys for, for a month, what's there? It just, it's, it's a number that needs to be looked at when you got five hundred hours. That's, that's just me. I, I could be totally different than anybody else. But that's the way, that's the minimum that I've looked at for, for zeros is not probably a good thing. And.
Yeah, um, so I think I can actually, um, point to the, you know, I'm looking at one, um, contractor in particular, who I think would be above the threshold that you're, um, you're mentioning. Um, and, you know, you could see some of it will, like, we have Wolverine on there, but they haven't, um, really been onsite. But, uh, for some of these folks who've been on site who have more zeros, um, you know, they're the ones who are going to be ramping up. And, um, you know, Che and I have definitely, you know, had this conversation about staying on them as, um, as those numbers increase because soon we're going to want to see no zeros across the board.
Uh, yeah.
Not concerned.
My only point with that is, is, is you guys saw that when we get a contractor in a room and then we question them as to what's the problem, they respond and act. So again, I don't, you know, you guys have your own way of doing things. I don't have a problem with anything you're doing. Uh, again, I get it. They're going to be ramping up. There's not a lot of, uh, contractors that are there yet, small crews, and the bulk of their work is coming up. I'm just trying to point out to me, I've always just looked at five hundred hours. But again, five hundred and ten thousand man hours is nothing. Uh, but I, you know, it just, it's just a starting point for me to start looking and watching that contractor. That's alls I'm pointing out.
Okay, that's, that's good. Thank you.
Yep, Fiore, it's Frank and Fontaine Brothers. So you're one hundred percent correct. Uh, Miller is the rebar and mesh company installing the rebar for J, uh, J L Marshall. And I believe they are a hundred percent minority. Liz and I will double check that to make sure that those numbers are captured in the Marshall category.
Yeah, I'm sure his, I know we had one resident there. His numbers are not going to be, I did have two females working with them. I'm not going to say his numbers are going to be right there. But again, i- if we're not capturing those numbers, uh, I do know, like I said, the vast majority of his workforce was minority, when a good portion of women, there was two there for the vast time he was there doing a rebar and, uh, a resident was there from pretty much day one, also minority. So he should have some good numbers. And if they're not reflecting in there, then again, but I, my only point of that was it really is, we found that subs of subs traditionally were escaping, uh, slipping under the radar. And I think just it needs to be pointed out that. Because again, they'll keep and continue to bring those subs in. But the problem is, we would like to see every contractor, uh, you know, put some residents on, put some women on, put some resident minorities on. So the problem is if the, the numbers of the G, I mean, uh, the crime are good or that, that main sub, then the other guy, he'll just continue to bring them in and it doesn't create any new, uh, hours for a resident and minority of women or a veteran in the, in the area. That's all. So it's just something that considers you moving forward. That's all. Thanks.
Will the numbers be reflected in Marshall's overall numbers though? I mean, if this is a priority company, this doing it would not inflate the numbers that Marshall is presenting or is presented to us as Marshall's numbers today?
I would think so, Melvin. I, we just have to check to see if, if those numbers aren't already captured. I'm, I'm not sure if they are or they're not. So I don't, I don't want to say either way, but that's something Liz and I can check.
All right, I just, that, that was just for me, trying to understand what, what Fiore is speaking of. Because I'm looking at the company and if the sub is, the, I mean, um, yeah, I, I
Open.
So, some of the subs may not have as good a numbers as other subs, but as the, uh, um, I mean, if the Marshall's numbers are here and, and that they're acceptable or what we want them to be, then, and there's multiple sub, sub, subs, they're all not going to come in equal, but wouldn't sub have ten employees and one have five that would raise numbers? I, I mean, I'm ju- just trying to get a grasp of what the problem or what the potential problem is, if there is a problem. Um, but I'll, I'll stop there. I don't want to make Liz have to miss her next meeting.
Okay, she's very straight. Looks okay so far, so.
Um, so outside of that, my only other question is, and this for Che and for, uh, is, which is, is that what typically, uh, what I've heard today and from Frank and from Liz regarding, you know, the extra paperwork and the follow-up and stuff. Is that what we are, can expect from the, uh, the site tech door project? Is that what we're going to expect from, um, the forestry building on, uh, that same type of, uh, layering of, um, expectations and documentation of of what, you know, what the REO is going to be looking like? Is, is the model that they're, they created being replicated with other contractors? I mean, other projects?
Yeah.
Each contract.
We've been using this model for, uh, a few projects now. So we'll, we'll be doing the same thing with site techs, windows and doors and other forestry building, yes.
Okay, that's, that's it for me. Then anybody else have any questions or comments? I'm not going to waste anybody's time. If, uh, nobody has any comments, we'll move right along. Um, in, any, uh, fight and number two is the challenges, uh, in the meetings, it's targets and resolutions for achievement. Um, I guess it's pretty broad kind of, um, item. So anybody, I, please speak on this. If this isn't, is an appropriate com, um, subject to be discussed. Anybody, I, please speak on this, if this isn't, is an appropriate com- um, subject to be discussed.
Just repeat that, that item again, the name of it.
Current challenges in meeting REO targets and resolutions for achievement.
Got it. Sorry, thank you.
So I would say.
But anyone else, you're welcome to spend to, to comment on it.
You're the one who put that on there, Counselor Allen?
I, I believe I was, yeah, I was just saying that we seem to be at a pretty good place. You know, given the right would like, what was going through my mind was, given the Brightwood Lincoln, pretty much success. And we seem to be off, you know, our numbers are pretty good on the swan, what are we calling this? The swan? The very swan. That I just didn't know if there was time or need to just discuss about any things that are chronic problems that. Uh, that we can improve, you know, like recruiting for women or, you know, anything like that, that there was anything else to, to talk about it.
First, Lindsay, if you'd like to.
Thank you. So, um, I don't, I mean, I don't have anything specifically um that I see for challenges. In meeting the targets, because I think that we've done a great job on the project so far. Um, what I would like to see though is a process developed for reporting out. Once these projects start completed, um, I don't know that we have one in place right now. Um, I know, I think, um. Counselor Edwards did a report of committee to the city council, but I don't know if, you know, we should talk about what kind of should be our. Wrap up, project wrap up reporting for each of the projects.
Would you be a, would you be comfortable or interested in trying to craft a draft of what that could look like and should look like for us to consider?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, if, if you, if you can help me create it, I don't have a problem. I'm sure myself or Tim wouldn't have a problem being the, you know, the mouthpiece to. To share it with our colleagues, um, but I'm not exactly, you know, I, I do talk about the REO consistently and the work that's being done. But it's more of a personal one-on-one, or it's usually deflecting somebody's criticism of what the administration or what the city is doing with. Regards to access uh by minorities to contracts and stuff and.
Yeah.
Yeah, the thing is, is uh, you know, the reality is, is that um, my biggest problem seems to be is not. Is the, the criticism doesn't always match the efforts. Uh, too many people are telling me, you know, what they can't get, what they don't know. We heard that reflected in the council meeting last night, you know, people who have voted on something for their entire career on the council didn't know that it existed. But they voted every year for the money to come in. Um, you, you can't, I don't know how to solve the problem of getting information out. You know, when is. If, I guess if I, I could probably solve a lot of the world's problems, I could figure out a good way to get it, all the information out to everybody.
And I'm certainly not suggesting this is going to solve any of those problems, because believe me, I sent tons of communications out. And then people say they never received any communications about it, so believe me, I know how that feels. But from the REO committee's perspective, I think a formal conclusion to a project that we've been monitoring. Where it probably just a communication both to the mayor and city council, this project was closed out, here were the numbers. You know, and if we have anything to add, we add it, and if not, we not, but um, at least for the REO, are. We will be able to keep track of our progress and we'll know that we've communicated that out. And done the best that we did to, you know, keep people updated on what's going on.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, Lindsay. I think that's a, if you're willing to draft something, I think that's a great idea, because we, you're right, we've got some good news. And we don't always get the right explosion on it.
Yeah, I, I think that was reflected in what happened with Brightwood. Um, you know, when we, you know, I was running around, you know, like chicken with his head off, talking about. Three point five million dollars went into the pockets and not the contractors or developers, but into our residents who worked on the project. And I don't think it really resonated with enough people how valuable that was and, uh, and meaningful that was. Um, you know, but, you know, the thing is, we'll keep talking about it. Um, and um.
I mean, if I, I could just, but I'm sorry, Melvin.
Oh, please, don't apologize, you go ahead, Tim.
Uh, what, last night there was a casino oversight committee meeting. Casino Oversight Committee is chaired by Mike Benton, he's been the main chair of that for the last few years, just like Melvin has been for REO. And um, the meeting, you know, it's, it's kind of a every once in a while kind of thing, because. Um, it's not something that we need to meet on every month or anything. But last night there was a big catch-up meeting. Um, kind of, there were eight, I think there were eight MGM employees at the meeting and they gave, uh. This was at five o'clock or so, or five thirty yesterday, and they gave an update on all the different things happening at MGM, from the finances. You know, to this payments to the city, to the shows, to the number of slot machines, to redesigns, to the. Sports betting, and yeah, any of that stuff, it was all covered. And in there somewhere was a report on um employees. And um, I can't remember, you know, exactly, but they had percentages on, on the types of things we talk about. Not, not to the degree we are, but you know, it was in there and MGM was pretty good at that the first time around. You know, they had good numbers and they reported on those numbers and I think uh it would be good for us to report on our numbers. That's all.
Okay, yeah, we, you know, we uh, I, I got no problem with it. I, you know, and Lindsay, I greatly, yeah. Yeah, Lindsay, yes, Lindsay, I'm sorry, I'm having one of those senior moments. Uh, I, I, if you create it, I'll be happy and I'm sure myself, um, my colleague Tim would be happy to echo whatever we create. And how to get it out there, and we do need to control the narrative better. I mean, we put in a lot of work and. You know, this is a decades-long process that has gotten us to this point. It may not be perfect and it may be more work to be done. But we, um, we should get, you know, I'm not, I'm not interested in getting credit for what I, you know, what, what I done personally, but. I mean, people, you guys have put the effort in and our partners with the carpenters have been with us since the inception. Uh, Fiori's been here since, you know, its inception and, you know, Maureen, uh, you know, we've had, we have Maureen now, but we've had. You know, other people that have helped us to get this, Lindsay, we appreciate everything you're doing. Che, we're, we're, you know, he's growing with us. And uh, trying to wear multiple hats now, so, um, but the bottom line is, is this is, uh. This is important work that's being done and it has value. Uh, it may not be as glamorous as what some people think should be, and certainly. We're not going to be able to satisfy our critics. Um, you know, I'm a big proverbs kind of guy, so. You know, arguing with a fool, you know, we get to argue with him, he's going to be just as stupid than we was when we started with the argument, so. Um, and just because they say it, and just because they say it repeatedly and loudly don't make it true. So, um, I said, that's all I got for today. Anybody else got anything that they need to speak on before I, I asked our partners in, uh, in with the carpenters to. Or Frank, any, any of you have anything you want to share or add to?
Can I just say one more thing, Counselor?
Of course.
Um, Che, could you just give us an update on your staffing, so the committee knows what to expect going forward for? Um, you know, the data that generally hope used to get for us.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, um, thank you, Lindsay. We, we're actually in the process of hiring uh for uh backfilling my position. Um, I, we think that we have a really good candidate, um, who has uh done this work um in another city. Uh, close to ours, I just don't want to give away the farm yet, so we're, we're very confident in our new hire. Um, we think that he's uh going to fit in very well, um, and do good work here. We also. Have a posting um for another position, uh, and possibly two, hopefully, um, as well, so we're. Consistently trying to ramp up our staffing. Um, we have one um that we have coming in, we're looking for another one as we just had a posting out. So, um, there's a lot of transition, but we're in the process of uh calming things down and uh getting, getting things straightened out, so. Um, uh, the person coming on is going to be great and uh hopefully we can get one more and then uh. Uh, we'll introduce them to you guys and, and put everything out there, but until then, we just want to keep kind of things under wraps.
Any fresh new ideals, um, can we anticipate? And you and your new role with ARPA and, and having access to any of this money is, is any of this possibly going to be. Such that it would help create some more opportunities for employment in the construction trades?
So I, I think so. I think the, uh, well, I actually know Lindsay and I actually interviewed him and he has. Uh, a really good ideas, um, as far as um in this space and in the uh small business space as well. So definitely, yes. And just to piggyback, uh, getting back to the challenges and things of that nature. Um, uh, overall, the uh. The contractors have been great as far as being amenable to the process, as far as the REO, as far as. Um, just getting on board and understanding that this is the direction that we're going and, you know, the direction the country is going in basically. And but uh, we do have uh people, uh, organizations that are going to uh not acquiesce. And um, we have a couple um that uh will become chronic, uh, and so. I'm looking at that, uh, as far as uh we have, um, just for example, um, the same. Uh, uh contractor that didn't do too well on Brightwood Lincoln's, not doing too well. On uh the Berry Swan that we've had uh conversations with, um, but still, you know, uh. Hasn't, uh, to my estimation, put in the work as far as the residents are concerned. And so my suggestion would be, uh, those contractors come before the committee after. Um, the project has been concluded, um, to meet these situations out, because we can't just keep having uh chronically. Uh, contractors who uh have the other contractors lift their numbers because it's in the aggregate.
Do, so they, they still, they come in as, and this is what the law department, lack of lawyer here have, comes in. Because it's still, are they still considered qualified bidders and what? I mean, we, calling them in, having a conversation, two projects in. Um, what can we do or how can we anticipate?
Well, my, my thing is, I understand how our uh, uh, state law supersedes our ordinance. Uh, completely understandable. However, I, I think there should be more pressure uh applied or more. Uh, uh. Pressure applied, I, is, is, is basically it, yes. I think there needs to be more pressure applied, more uh eyeballs. I think they just need to be put on notice more. Um, that's all.
So, uh, and, and that pressure needs to come after the project or is that something?
Well, it comes during the project as well. Um, it comes before the project even starts. Um, we have conversations and we. Uh, check throughout the whole project. Uh, however, um, if it doesn't happen, then it just doesn't happen. Uh, but we still need to continue uh to pressure uh these organizations with whatever mechanisms that we can use.
So can we, I mean, is it beneficial for, does that pressure or whatever the description of pressure is come from you? Or is that something that?
I, I, I think it comes from whatever mechanisms we can use. It definitely comes from me on the front end and during the whole project. Um, but I think it needs to come from whatever mechanisms that we can use.
Is any validity, uh, is it, I mean, uh, value for the committee of the REO to on our letterhead, uh, you know? Does, I mean, give me, I mean, you know, it's like, you know.
I, I, I think, I, I think the, the suggestion was just uh speaking to the challenges, um, the solution or. Uh, certain ideas as far as how we meet this out, I think that's for everybody to be able to think of that's on this call and maybe bring some. Uh, uh, suggestions to the next meeting.
Well, I mean, I had intended to ask, and I mean, because I keep always thinking that, you know, I don't know what the challenges are and Fiori probably knows it better. And in, in our partners and, you know, Frank and, I mean, every, what I'm hearing in the news is everybody's is struggling to get employees. I don't, I, I wouldn't expect that construction trade would be immune to this, I mean.
Oh, not at all. I, 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 I completely agree and I completely understand and maybe, not maybe, it is. Uh, uh, not just the fact that um, the numbers aren't there, but. There's a, a general attitude as far as that's concerned as well.
Yeah, we, yeah, all right, well, I.
And, and it has nothing to do with uh Fontaine, they do a great job. Um, they do an excellent job as far as these things are concerned. Um, it's just the companies in general.
Okay.
If I may, just, I'm just a construction guy, I put up the buildings and I work with Liz and try to help her. You know, when she meets challenges with the subcontractors. Just a side note, Chandler is the, one of the best glazing contractors you're going to have, so. Kudos to you, that, that job should go good. The one thing that we have, and again, this is just big picture. Guy has been doing it for thirty-eight years, looking at it. We're blessed that the size of our company. Allows us to hire qualified people like Liz that dig into this while I'm trying to get concrete poured. And steel up, she's focused on this. I think one of the challenges that you had, I think I heard a, a million dollars. Is the threshold where this starts. Some of those contractors that are doing that work, they just don't have the capacity. That like a company like Fontaine or Dan O'Connell has to, to be able to afford a professional like Liz. And I, and I, I, I don't have a good answer for it, but that is, I foresee that as a, is a real problem for some of these smaller companies. Trying to make it, trying to provide for their families and, you know, they're, they're only so big.
Completely understandable, completely understandable, and uh, that makes perfect sense. The two companies, and it's just two. Uh, companies that I'm speaking to, and it's really just one that's been on uh multiple projects. Have about ten million dollars of the award of a two hundred million dollar award at five percent. Um, with about seven percent of city residents on the job between the two of them. So to me, that's unacceptable, and I understand about the smaller companies, but when a company can handle seven million dollars of award. Then they can handle uh some oversight as well. That's just my opinion.
No, you're, you're right, and I know exactly who you're talking about, and uh, I think Fiori does too, because it's, it's a steel guy. But of his, he's only a portion of the steel, so we buy the steel from a, from a. A vendor, in this particular case, it's Nargate, same steel guy that did Brightwood, they're, they're one of the best. Uh, you, for whatever reason, we just can't get steel faster. And as least expensive as we can from the Canadian firms, they just seem to be able to pump out the steel and it all, when it comes, it fits. They then hire, so my contract is with Nargate, but we have a contract with Nargate who has a contract with.
Yeah, I see.
Stellar, so. She paints the, the right picture and uh, and we did have some challenges with, with Mark and that we worked with Fiori to. And Liz to, to try to get him to bolster his numbers, so.
And that's why I said about Fontaine, you guys do an excellent job. Uh, this, you guys do great. Um, and that, that was my thing as far as. Uh, Norgate, and when it was um, uh, pressure, 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 the resident numbers started to creep up. In uh Brightwood, you know, and pressure, pressure, hopefully they'll creep up here, but my thing is, this is uh going to be repetitive. And you know the resident numbers are an issue, and when it's pressure, it does creep up, so that, that's to say, there can be some more. Given, um, absent the pressure, because when there is some, then these things start to trickle up a little bit, but. They get in, get out, and then it's, and then it's done, right? You know, so.
Yeah, the other.
Can I, can I just make a quick comment? So at the end of the day, no matter how you slice and dice it, if a contractor's numbers could be terrible at the end of every single job. The bottom line though is if he's making a true effort and the availability isn't there to meet the numbers. Then you can't punish a contractor who is actually trying to meet the requirements. So I just want to be careful again, how we go down these roads, uh, because again, if they can document that they are making the effort. And the availability of whatever category isn't there, whether it's open shop or non-union, excuse me, that's the same thing, union or non-union. As long as they're able to document their efforts, a real effort, not, oh, I put it added. So one of the biggest pet peeves of mine from day one is when a contractor puts in, well, I have an ad in the paper for an experienced. Electrician and plumber, well, look, I've been around for twenty years. I don't, I've never seen a guy standing on a corner, says the, the, the synopsis I give. With a sign, licensed electrician or plumber looking for a job. They're not sitting on the corner waiting for work, they're working somewhere. So you either have to start an apprentice program or train these workers, because they're just not out there to meet your ad. So an ad in that application doesn't cut it in my eyes, but again, it's something, he made an effort. But is that truly an effort? I'm just trying to put it in perspective of what I see as an effort, that's all.
That, that, that's completely duly noted. Um. Again, to Brightwood Lincoln, they started out at about three percent. Staying on him the whole time, got up to about twenty percent. That was like seventeen percent from the beginning till the end of the project, which is a a a great addition, however, still fifteen percent below the benchmark. And so I I get everything you're saying, but it just seems like after starting at three percent, having to be hounded for a certain amount of time and then getting up to twenty percent and now we're back down to about seven percent right now and back to hounding.
Yep, I agree. No, and everything Fiori said is is accurate and Melvin. If if you looked at a book and said, who is the premier steel supplier, steel erector, we got the best of the best out there to put that building up as accurately and as quickly as humanly possible, given all the pandemic challenges and everything. But with that comes this side of the challenge. It's just another whole another whole part of the process. So again, we're lucky that we have the horsepower to to handle it head on where a lot of folks don't. They're just just not in that capacity. So I feel for them. But I do honestly feel that as as the younger folks that are in our culture, are, they have the ability in a vision to see that change is needed and are taking proactive measures to make that change happen. They're not just talking, you know, talking to talk, they're walking to walk, they're they're actually doing it. So I'm happy that I'm part of that.
And to and to piggyback off of what you're saying, Frank, we completely understand. We have to measure and balance the REO with the public benefit as well. You know, as you say, we're getting the best steel erector in the area. That's something we have to consider as well. I understand that. My thing is just the what seems to be being perpetuated. That's all.
And actually, the balance has always been the most difficult part from this, from the very beginning. Because as, you know, as I take an oath to represent the city in the interest of taxpayers of the city, so this, you know, it it can't, we're trying to balance it against the interest of a private you know, construction company who was trying to make money for his family against the taxpayers' dollars who are going to pay for it. And get the best job we can. And nobody's going to tell me that we're not rising and raising the cost of that by enforcing a contractor to hire somebody like Liz who's not working for free. That's coming out of their bottom line and I'm sure they're writing it into the contract, but still. I mean, everybody's, you know, but I also understand the value of having the REO, so. Anybody else have anything? We've been on for almost an hour and I don't want to take any more of anybody's time. So.
Yeah, yeah, I got something, Melvin.
Go ahead, Frank. I mean.
Yeah, that that's why I put, the discussion we just had is what I meant when I put on there, what other challenges do we have or something, that kind of nebulous topic, you know, when things, when things are pretty good on the numbers, that's when we should look at, you know, any of these other issues that we have. So over the years I've been on here, you know, we had the same kind of discussion we just had. And, you know, we started to not look at the numbers just at the subcontractor level, but you know, make the GC accountable for the numbers and the whole project and things like that. I'm just wondering if the conversation, you know, Shay just Shay just alluded to, you know, a contractor or two that are problems and have to, somebody's been a problem on a couple of projects. I don't know who they are. But could we talk about, I'm not talking about punishment or anything. I'm just talking about discussing it. And, you know, could you bring some of that data to one of our meetings and let's just talk about it, what their challenges are what you're seeing and are we being too lenient? Are we not following up enough? This is, I think this is the time to look at that. That's all. I'm not in favor of discipline or punishment unless we discuss it and you see that they've had a chance to rectify their situation and and they haven't or or whatever. So that's all I'm suggesting is that next month or a couple of months from now, we we could have a discussion about that. What are our standards? What are you, what are you guys seeing? And is, are people taken advantage or not paying enough attention to the numbers? That's all.
And my point of emphasis was not a strict punishment right now. It's about a culture that needs to keep pushing in that direction and for us to keep perpetuating that culture.
And marrying the resources with, whatever the excuse is, the reason why they can't be more, that we're having to have this conversation, that's where our interest needs to be is, is that how do we eliminate the need to have this conversation? So if there's resources out there because the advocates, the social justice warriors are out there saying we need more access. Well, you know, are we marrying their interest and the demand for employment with the contractors who need it? So maybe there's a gap in there somewhere. But to that point, Maureen, can you somehow take from what was just discussed and put that as an agenda item for the next meetings for us to continue? And I think next month when we meet, we should probably continue this conversation as well. I'm going to ask everybody, please don't hesitate to share with Maureen suggestions for the committee's agenda for any upcoming meeting. And at this point, do either of our guests have anything that they'd like to add before I bring this meeting to a close? Yes, Charlie.
Okay, first of all, thank you, counselor, but I like, you know, you did mention that you're raising the cost maybe a little bit. I personally can attest that you've, this committee has changed a lives. People in Springfield that wouldn't have had the opportunity. I know people that bought houses were homeless before they came to the trades. And, you know, and there is a little bit of cost maybe, but there, you know what, it's never easy doing the right thing. And you you know, you've you've really done a lot for the people of the city. The other thing I'd like to point out is there's probably two different levels, subcontractor that you have different levels of influence. The filed sub bid contractors, the rules are a lot stricter on what you can and can't do with them. The the direct bid contractors, you know, you have a lot more influence. I feel a lot more leeway. But I would also talk to the, if we have a contractor that's and I'm not picking any one particular contractor, because what I've seen has been successful is like Chandler. I told them at MGM, you need to hire city residents, not for this job. You need to integrate them into your crew and make them part of your home team. And they traveled around with them and then they came back and did work at the Berry, I mean, at Brightwood. And now, if they, when they end up at DeBerry, I think they're doing the panels there. They're going to have the same people who have been in in that crew. So in the two years the people have been off this project, ask them who they've hired. If somebody says, in the, you know, we've had the same eight people for ten years. Well, I'd I'd look at it a little different than somebody who turns over half their crew every two or three years. So that's, that's another way you could pressure them. If you're going to continue bidding for the city, as you start hiring people, whether it's here or not, if you like doing that, you know, million dollars worth of work for the city of Springfield. We're not just going to continue to give you jobs. We're going to look at somebody else who maybe will add that added value to the contract, putting a city resident as not just, an ad is a Band-Aid. That's an afterthought. Somebody who you bring into the crew and it's culture, just like Shay said. You bring somebody into your crew, you make them part of the team, they're part of your family. They they go around with you and then it's not just a job, it's a career. And the other thing I I do have to, the culture at Fontaine has been great. I get calls from superintendents, foremen, hey, someone came into the job today and they've sent me about eight referrals of people that I got set up to go and apply at our apprentice program. And actually, a few of those people have picked up work and it's when they identify some a need, they call me, they they give them my number, it's a call Charlie, he'll help you. And I'm sure they're doing that with the other trades as well. So I want to thank Frank and Liz for that.
Our pleasure.
That's it, that's it for me. I'm, uh, thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you, Charlie.
I, Fiori's got kicked off, but I think we're pretty much, is anything else anybody needs to, Fiori says he's trying to get in, waiting in the host. And I'd like to kind of get the meeting concluded, but Fiori, you have anything you wanted to, I'm just going to give him a submit. Fiori, you're back? Fiori?
He's muted.
Yeah, hey, can I make one comment on what Charlie said?
Yes, please.
So doing construction long enough. And I pointed this out in the other meeting. So what Charlie pointed out is correct. The city is definitely under a little bit, under the gun when it comes to file sub bid. And the reason I say that is this. It usually is the lowest sub bidder, as long as they check off all the boxes and all the criteria is met. But the ultimate word that needs to be pointed out, and I've been trying to point this out forever, is the word responsible. So if contractors deem irresponsible as a file sub bid, even though it's the city contract, it's the hardest really deal with. The GC will tell you right now, Frank will tell you, because you're stuck with them. It doesn't make a difference, but the city is, has the capacity to call, it's a to name somebody irresponsible, pick or whatever you want to call it, opposite of responsible. But again, that will cost you more money as a city because the next guy is definitely going to be more. But ultimately, yes, there is a little bit easier with a GC controlled contractor, but and again, but what you're also seeing is, just trying to give you guys the numbers here. The sub of a sub is a layer down and that's out of the hands of the GC. So that creates, can create a little bit of trouble. I'm trying to give you where your problems could be arising in the bidding process. That's all. So just wanted to point out those three things for you guys. Thanks.
Everybody's time is is kind of shortened up, so I know, no disrespect to anybody, but without objection, I'd like.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, we'll continue this and and please feel free to ask Maureen to include any of this, continue of this conversation, but people are dropping. I have another one in fifteen minutes, so. Appreciate everybody. Everybody stay safe, stay healthy and thank you.